Citation for unlawful unlawful possession of suspected fentanyl pills to warrant arrests with five loitering. And then watched three had one hundred and fifty self initiated, one hundred and thirty six C O P calls, four traffics with six. Failure to yields, five Walker stops, three suspicious suspicious vehicles. And two disturbances found while patrolling. They had nineteen proactive citations, twenty proactive calls in the Northern Avenue area. Twenty-five proactive calls in the Abriano Mesa Junction area and twenty-six proactive calls in the downtown area. And with that, that concludes my updates.
Questions from council?
I had an issue. I thought maybe you could look into it with code enforcement. There seems to be a proliferation of people that believe that if they throw a couch or a bedroom set out in the middle of the. Sidewalk in their yard that somebody's going to miraculously pick it up. And I I've noticed as as the. The as time goes by and these things start aging. Less likely that somebody's going to pick it up than they really look like trash, but they continue to leave it out there. And it just seems to me that there has to be some some issue in our code that they can't do that.
Yeah, um, one thing that we do in the office is somebody contacts us with that. We report it to code enforcement. A lot of times somebody can call court of code enforcement on him. I know that in the past we've had we've had issues with evictions where they just throw everything on the sidewalk and there there are some. Legal regulations about when that can be removed or when it's considered quote unquote trash on the street. But if you're aware of a situation like that, feel free to forward it to me and I could talk to code enforcement.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Think we're good. Okay, we're gonna move on to item agenda B, the city audit. Matthew Manno CPA and partner, Ruben Brown. Max Habercon, CPA and manager, Ruben, excuse me, Brown, Ruben Brown, twelve fifteen minute presentation. Turn your mics on, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so as was mentioned, I'm Matt Marino. I was your engagement partner. I've been your engagement partner to the last couple of years, and this is Max Habercon. He was our engagement manager. We're here to report on the audit results for the two thousand and twenty-four calendar year end. We're going to spend most of the time in the viewpoints document, which I see is up on the slide deck up there above. So this is really our official communication to you all as governance. Reporting back the results of the audit, but also talking about some of the standards we have to follow and anything else that we need to bring to your attention, such as. Findings, recommendations, and so on. I'm gonna go through this and I'm gonna take about five to ten minutes and I'll leave some time for questions in case there are questions. Um, but if you also want to stop me to, it will not ruin the flow of my presentation. If there's something you really are wanting to ask at that time, please do that because it might be more meaningful at that time. Okay, um, so as I mentioned earlier, this is our communication to you. So as part of the audit process, we kind of do. Several different things. Number one, we're auditing your financial statements. You prepare an annual comprehensive financial report. That is prepared by your management team together with your outsourced accounting team. We audit it and make sure that there's nothing that is materially misstated. So we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. I know that sounds. Very unexciting, but that's the best or highest level result you can receive from an audit. We also issue a report over the internal control over financial reporting with relation to the year as well. And that was a, we did have one matter that I'll bring up a little bit later on that with regard to a recommendation we're gonna make. And then we also, because the city receives and expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money. Um, so grants, we do something called commonly called a single audit. And so what we do is we. Rotate through different programs and we have to audit them based on a risk based approach. So. You'll see many of these programs being audited like once every three years, sometimes even more often, depending on what the program is. So I'll talk about those results, but we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion with regard to that. This viewpoints document kind of just ties it all in a bow for you, and that's the the last little document that we do issue. Included in these financial statements are different accounting policies. This year was a little bit unique. We did have a new accounting standard that we needed to implement. Well, we collectively, the auditors had to audit it. The city needed to implement it. It was GAZB one oh one governmental accounting standards board one oh one, and that had to do with how do we account for compensated absences? The prior treatment for compensated absences was all over the board in the governmental sector, and so the governmental accounting standards board issued a new standard. And that resulted in your management team having to go through and measure not only like vacation, but any sort of compensated absence. And that resulted in a lot of analysis. So because there's a lot of different sort of agreements you have with different. Um, employee groups, whether it be police, um, other sort of represented employees. And so. The city did engage with a actuary to help with that calculation. And so that was a, it was a robust calculation. It took some time for the city to get through that. And so that adjustment impacted many different funds or what's commonly called opinion units of your financial statements. Not because it was wrong, but because we needed to implement implement the new standard and make sure we adjust the numbers to take that into account. That was adjusted without any further adjustment from us from like an audit adjustment. Your team did that adjustment and we audited and we didn't have anything we need to bring to your attention. I just wanted to point that out because that is the biggest change from prior year is that new accounting standard. Thankfully, um, for two thousand and twenty-five, the accounting standards won't be as robust, but there is. Uh, the accounting standards board is always issuing new accounting standards. So I'd encourage you as city council, if there's an accounting standard that you are aware of that doesn't make sense to you. Please write them a letter at government accounting standards board. They hear from me. They hear from your finance team all the time. But you guys are the ultimate users of financial statements, your citizens and you all. And so that's important.
This might be a good time to ask.
Yes.
We can ask questions.
Absolutely.
Is that is, does that constitute a contingent liability or an actual liability? And what what are we talking about here? A million dollars, two million or half a million?
So yeah, I can speak a little bit to that. So the. Standard used to be, what are we gonna basically, what are we going to be required to pay out in cash as of the end of the year? So probably what a lot of people think of an actual liability. The new standard is more likely than not, it's either going to be settled either through normal payroll transactions, which is basically someone's taking that leave as they normally would. Or will be paid out in cash. So more likely than not is a threshold that we like to use. That usually means fifty percent or greater chance that it's gonna happen, basically better than a coin flip. Um, and so that's going to be more of a projection of a liability because will it happen? Probably, but will it definitely happen? Not necessarily.
Not to the exact dollar.
Not to the exact dollar it is. So it's more representative of the potential future liability. And what you're going to actually have to pay out than it was just the old way, which was just what we are going to have to physically pay out in cash if we were to stop.
Is that?
Activity.
I heard you say fifty percent. Is that the number that you use or?
That's what the standard spelled out as a the the definition for more likely than not, but that that there's many things you have to look at. Do we know somebody's going to be retiring? Therefore, it's not more likely than not. It's almost sure. But then you have to look at those other parts of your population that we don't know what their long term employment employment plans are. So we have to make some. Judgments and estimates based on that. And you're not only looking at what do you owe them in pure compensation? But it's also the the any payroll taxes that might be due on that and any other things related to that. Unless it's a defined benefit plan, and then that is a different calculation already included in the.
That seems to be aligned with the the requirements under GAZB for pensions as an example.
It's a lot closer to that. Yes, as as being more of a projection of, you know, what could be the potential future liability. Yes, in that way.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking that time for that question because it's it was a big standard. It was the most major thing for this year that we needed to talk through. Included in every set of financial statements are disclosures. On this page, you'll see some of the disclosures that are just key to. Make sure you're aware of them, not because they're wrong, or they're just key to the how we measure things at the city. So obviously, um, fair value of your investments is kind of important. How do we derive the value of the investments? How do we derive the the amount of pension liability we have on the books? How do we account for leases? How do we account for O P E P or other post employment benefits, which that's not compensated absences? It's another class of. Um, benefits that employees do receive. Um, we did have a change in accounting principle, which we've already talked about, and then. The commitments and contingencies footnote is always just good to look at. Um, the accounting estimates, I think we've kind of hit the estimates pretty hard. Your most major estimates are your pensions, your O P E P, your leases. The compensated absences and then what's commonly called depreciation. So it's how we charge through the use of fixed assets as a expense line item. Buildings don't last forever. You need to charge that through as an expense over time, usually about forty years, but it's different, you know, vehicles, streets. Buildings and so on. So that gets charged through and those are estimates. You're not going to see that actually leaving in cash for depreciation, but it does need to be charged through. Um, corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We did have a couple of corrected misstatements, which I'll speak to here in a little bit with regard to grant accounting. Um, so that's we'll talk about that. And then we, as part of it, we also do aggregate any small adjustments that we note that we want to make sure that. If we didn't book these, would the financials be materially misstated? And there was just a couple of those that we noted and we we felt that they were immaterial as did management. And so we did not book those in the records of the city. Um, really, as far as the audit process, we did not need to engage outside expert for on our firm side. Um, as I mentioned, your city management team did engage with an actuary to help them with the calculation of GAZB one oh one. There were really no other matters that um. Of affected our retention as your auditors really need nothing I need to bring to your attention, other than. We did file later in September, which we did need to file extensions with the state and the G F O A, but all those were filed. We filed on time. And so that really was a matter of getting through that GAZB one oh one calculation, just because it was not a. Uh, small calculation required a lot of work on everybody's part and just the overall impact to the financials was a. A lot of different numbers needed to be adjusted to take that into account. So it just took time to get it implemented, but. We did get done on time, which is the important thing to point out. Um, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we did issue one material weakness over grant accounting. We noticed that there were two grants that the accounting didn't either relieve a deferred item or recognize additional revenue. They weren't gigantic to the city as a whole, but they were. Big enough to that part of the city's accounting that we had to deem a material weakness. Um, your management team was oh, 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 they're they've already implemented a new accounting. Process to check for it. It was really a an error. It wasn't malicious or intentional. It was errors happen. And so that's, um, they've. Come up with a way to make sure that they calculate and recalculate some of those numbers to make sure there's no material errors. So that's the first one thing I want to point out with regard to that. As part of the audit process, I mentioned that we do a single audit or a federal grants audit. So we did look at four programs. We looked at the COVID or the fiscal recovery funds. We looked at the highway planning and construction program. We looked at the home program as well as the community development block grant. We did issue one material weakness with regard to reporting that needed to happen with regard to the. Community development block grant, the control that makes sure that reporting occurred. Um, failed and therefore the reporting was not done. Um, management has provided us with their management action plan and we will follow up on that next year to make sure that it gets implemented. I'll tell you findings, they're never fun, but honestly, if I have no findings, I would. Year after year after year, I'd wonder whether I'm turning it over enough stones. And so not that I want to gotcha with findings, but I it. We should have some sort of recommendations to you and therefore. Take it seriously, but I would not panic about it unless it's the same finding. Year after year after year, because that could be indicative of indifference or lack of caring, but findings do happen.
The other thing I always like to talk about with findings is that. When people are looking at your financial statements and seeing that, because this does get, you know, posted to the federal audit clearinghouse, which is a nationwide, you know, database of. You know, findings for financial statements and single audits. It's not about having a finding. It's about, are you remediating that finding in, you know, a relatively short order? So you don't have that same finding again and again and again. So it's not, you have a finding immediately lose your grant funding by any means necessary. It's. Is there a trend of you not being able to manage federal funding? And that's really more the the. Context in which they use findings to determine what's going on in any one organization. Everybody's gonna make mistakes. But what do you do with those mistakes? Once you make them is really what matters at the end of the day.
Do we have a question in the center?
Nope.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So as part of that, we did issue the management letter. The management letter really just reiterates the findings we had around grant accounting and the. Um, the reporting for C B D G. Really, overall, the audit results went well. Your your management team was very collaborative throughout the process. They let us know where they were at with. Their calculations of the compensated absences in the audit process. So. Really, nothing to report there, just those two matters that we need to bring to your attention because. There are um, big enough in magnitude that we need to let you know about it, but nothing to panic about. Um, behind that is just the adjusting journal entries we made as well as the past journal entries and then the management representation letter, which is just like, hey. When we asked about it, did you provide us with this? Did you let us know of anything we need to know about all that sort of stuff? It's kind of, it seems like a. A lot of legalese to make sure that we retain, we were able to obtain all the audit audit evidence we needed to, which we did. That concludes the part I need to speak about, but I'm here to take any questions you might have.
Council Flores, please. Uh, as you know, um. During COVID, uh, there was a deadline as to the ARPA money, uh. That was sent out to. All of the United States, but uh, where would? How how did that? There was an expiration date of December thirty-one, I think of last year, twenty-four. Uh, did that, was there, uh, were we able to capitalize on, I think it was around thirty-six million dollars that we. Uh, accepted from the government, uh, to help us during this period, uh. What can you conclude from how we did as a community? In, uh, in number one, utilizing it for the for the right reasons with within the definition of how it could be used. And whether or not, uh, there was any balance left, uh, on the table or whether there was, uh. We we spent every penny of it.
I could definitely speak to that. So, um, you're speaking about the fiscal recovery funds.
Yes.
And so that is, um, one of the programs we did audit. It was deemed high risk by the federal government, so we have more or less been audited in that program every year until it's kind of gone. Um, so that was something we did audit, and so we did not issue any findings saying you used it improperly, you lacked controls over it. Nothing like that. We don't evaluate, you know, could this use have been better than this? Because as long as it's within the guidelines, that's all we're really looking for, and we're looking for that there were controls applied to that process. And do you want to fill in anything from there?
No, I think that that covers it. Yeah, the allotment was spent by when it was supposed to be spent and that it was used for the appropriate purposes under the. The grant's original terms. So that's as far as we can really speak to as far as the single audit goes.
But it was one of the programs that was audited.
Yeah. We have a self insurance health plan and, uh. We have actuaries that I I believe do a great job. Uh, you don't really take, you don't really go into that debt in depth as far as. Either confirming that that the reserves are correct, or do you rely on the actuaries that we hire? Uh, in our self insurance program, because we do have. Uh, a fund there, obviously, and have insurance of with the stop laws at a certain level. Uh, do you do much in that area or?
I'll start. If I miss anything, you can fill in. We definitely look at the shelf insurance. We we are relying on the reports from your actuaries or. Um, whether the third party administrator, whoever it is, we're looking to make sure the estimates that they're using are reasonable. They're not using any like. Oh, they're not using a forty percent rate of return on investments or that, you know, something that would be out of the ordinary. Um, we are also looking back and saying, okay, were their estimates reasonably accurate based on historical data? Um, that's part of it is what we look at as well. So we but it's. We do look at it because it is a disclosure in your financial statements. So we make sure that that meets the. What we would think would be reasonable in the circumstances.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thanks.
Council Martinez.
I appreciate that report. Thanks. I just have one clarifying questions, uh, question regarding the C D B G report. Um, was that a lack of, uh, reporting financials? Or to the feds or was that like around grant deliverables?
So on the C D B G finding that you're talking about in the single audit, yes. So that was in relation to a requirement that. Uh, prime sub recipient, in this case, the city is receiving the money directly from the federal government from HUD.
Right.
And if they sub receipt that money out to a third party to do some great.
Nonprofits, other entities.
What have you? They're required to file certain, uh, reports that they made a sub, uh, sub recipient agreement to the federal government. It's called a financial.
F A F A D A is.
Financial, uh, federal financial, uh, transparency, um, report.
It's been out for a couple, many, many years at this.
Regardless, it that is one of those things that is was relatively new and it's a change. A significant change for reporting that it has been from the past, and it's one of the reasons why it wasn't looked at, but it. The report wasn't made when it should have been made for this particular grant, and that's why the finding.
Oh, okay.
So it's not the full financial reporting of the grant.
Just that specific.
It's just specifically letting them know, hey, we gave out a sub recipient.
To this, to this entity, this entity, that entity.
And it's only over over a certain amount too. There's a de minimis limit for who you have to actually report to.
Yep.
That helps. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, Council Maestra, please.
We usually get this a little earlier. Did you say why we're getting it so late in the season?
We're getting it later because of the compensated absence calculation that needed to occur. And the working with the actuaries to make sure all those calculations did occur.
And was that due to regulation changes or?
It was a new accounting standard, correct? So.
Thank you.
Said it.
Mm hmm.
Okay, anybody else? And then comments? I think we're good, gentlemen.
Thank you. We appreciate being of service to you, the citizens, um, the entire community of Pueblo. We enjoy, um, being of service and anytime there's questions, don't hesitate to reach out. We're your auditors. We have to call balls and strikes. We have to remain independent, but it doesn't mean we're not here to help and make sure that we can give you good guidance.
Thank you. Okay, just for the record, President Mark, I live will be here by, we said around sixish, it's five fifty-six. But we're gonna move on to the street piano project item agenda C. Mark Savatella, Creative Consortium of Pueblo. Fifteen minute presentation. Mark, turn on your mic.
Okay, uh, there's the presentation. Excellent. Um, thank you so much for having me here. Um, this is a project that, uh, actually, uh, me and some other people, my wife first had the idea, but I've been talking to various different musicians. And nonprofits and artists around town and kind of gathering support for it. And we're at the stage now where we're kind of ready to go forward and get what we need in terms of permission to do this. So. This is that. Yes, great. Um, what we're talking about is a, it's, um. We're taking pianos that are will be donated and paint them like murals and place them in public spaces for people to play. And this is a program. A type of program that is found in dozens of cities around, uh, the world. It it kind of started in Europe. There's a number of cities in the United States that do it. Uh, I'll talk a little bit about those, but, um. Yeah, it's just a very popular type of, uh, program. It's just a community building thing. It adds beauty, beauty to the community. In Colorado, there's two that I know of. Denver is one that most, a lot of people know about. I don't think their program is still active. But on Sixteenth Street Mall in Denver, they used to have a piano. Uh, Fort Collins, though, has a very active program where they turn over many pianos. They've got dozens of pianos in different places. They rotate them around. And, uh, it's a, it's a quite active program, and I've been in contact with the people there to understand more about how they run it. There is, I should mention, a, uh, a kind of a mothership to all this. The guy who kind of started this and put it on the map. Uh, does kind of a franchising thing where you can be part of his program and go through his way of doing things. Uh, and, uh. I, uh, in the people that I've talked to, none, none of them have gone through that program. Everyone seems to do their own version of it, and that's what we'd be looking at as well. So. Uh, as far as who I've been talking to and who would be doing this, so I'm with the Creative Consortium of Pueblo. Uh, and if you're not familiar, well, we're, we're not like a nonprofit or anything, which is just a loose collection of artists and gallery owners and and so forth. And we would be the ones kind of overseeing the program. But because we are talking about taking donations, we know that that involves, uh, having, you know, nonprofit status to accept the donations and the Pueblo Arts Alliance would be. Uh, our agent as far as that goes. Uh, it's the the Pueblo Arts Alliance, there are and Sangre de Cristo Arts Center, lots of other options of people who are involved with the consortium that could possibly play a role, but the Arts Alliance in particular. C S what C S U Pueblo is also very interested in participating in this program. In that, uh, they they actually have like half a dozen pianos sitting in the hallway right now that were moved out of practice rooms. Uh, getting ready to replace those pianos and they're like, we want to put these things somewhere. And it just so happened that I came to them to talk to them about this. The day after they put those pianos in the hallway, and so they're 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 on board. The idea is that those pianos would be donated, but we would also have other pianos donated by community members, and we're not thinking that that's a a big ask. Most other programs that do this, they say they have no trouble finding donations and all you have to do is go to Facebook Marketplace to see how many people are giving away pianos to know. That's not a hard, uh, thing to find. Uh. The one thing that we don't really have any worked out right now is moving the piano from people's houses to wherever we're gonna put them. But we imagine that that is not a hard problem to solve. Worst case, you know, we hire people and we'll figure out where we get the money. We do have strong connections to the local arts community. That's what the Creative Consortium is about. And so there's all sorts of people who have done public arts projects. Uh, like Tia Monson, who's done a lot of the murals, the sidewalk murals and stuff is excited to be doing some of this. We have, uh, a couple of people lined up who are piano technicians who would be able to help with that in particular. Well, there's one guy who's kind of new to the technician business, still kind of building his skills. He needs pianos to practice on, and so this would actually be kind of good for him. But House Piano, which is our kind of main piano store in town. But House Piano, which is our kind of main piano store in town, they were the suppliers of many of the pianos for Denver. So they have a lot of experience in being involved in programs like this and kind of know what's involved. The, the, the owner of there is their main technician. He doesn't live in Pueblo anymore. His store is here. I don't know if you know about him, but he lives in Texas. He just leaves his store wide open. So yeah, if you want to go look at a piano, just walk in the door and it's out in the county. It's crazy. Uh, just walk in the door and then let me know if you want to buy something. And so we, we would, uh, but yeah, so I talked to him about the program and he's interested. He just don't, doesn't like seeing pianos get destroyed because that's what happens when you leave them out. In Denver, they left them right out in Sixteenth Street Mall. We would probably not be doing something quite like that. We'll probably be soliciting donations, like having QR codes on the piano so that people can, uh, donate money to pay for things like moving them. Hopefully maybe pay some artists to do the, um, painting, although I imagine that some people would do it just to do it. So as far as where the pianos might actually go, I mean, obvious place is the Riverwalk. And in particular, the Main Street and Union Avenue, uh, overpasses provide protection. So a piano under there would, would do pretty well. The, uh, the paint, painting the pianos actually gives it some amount of protection already. But, uh, but yeah, you, if we put it in an exposed area, you, it's a death sentence for the piano, a quick death sentence. First time it rains, the piano's, uh, gone. People have experimented with things like, oh, we have tarps and we'll make sure that the, the tarp gets, yeah, that's, that's, doesn't work. Um, or there's a local business that's gonna move it into there. Yeah, that doesn't work either. But we do, at least I have the idea that there's a number of vacant buildings that have entryways that are covered that maybe the owners would be interested in having pianos placed there. But there's also parks around town that have gazebos, uh, or other sorts of structures that would work for this. I've talked to a couple of people. I've talked to people from Public Works, talked to people in Park, Parks Department. And, uh, if people are just generally, uh, excited about the idea, say, yeah, we're gonna find these places, we'll make this happen. And we're open to suggestions. The other suggestions, well, yeah, I talked about the weather. The paint is some protection, but it's, if it's out, say, on the Riverwalk under an overpass, okay, it's not getting soaked, but big enough storm comes, wind comes, it's gonna get splashed. But the paint, generally speaking, is decent enough protection for that. Uh, we could have tarps, but you know, someone has to buy them and I just have, uh, some amount of skepticism that it would be worth the effort. The thing that people have said is that they have, people doing this in other cities have not had real problems with vandalism or anything of the nature. Piano is a hard thing to steal. So people don't typically try to steal the piano. People had said, like in Fort Collins and one other place I talked to, they were worried about people stealing benches, but that didn't seem to be a problem, but they did fasten them down anyhow. You can fasten the top of the piano closed so that people don't try to open it up. And we're talking about upright pianos, by the way, not grand pianos. To fasten the top closed with screws that, you know, prevents people from just opening up the lid and messing with it. But you use screws so that you can still open it when you need to, to tune it, because that's how you do that. In Denver at least, and some other places, they will bring them indoors, uh, over the winter. In Fort Collins, they bring some of them indoors and they leave others out. Bringing them indoors, certainly if, if someone is volunteering space and someone is volunteering to move them, that's fine. But the way I figure it is we have enough nice weather days that, uh, I would, I would rather see them left out and leave them in a place where we don't have to worry about that. Less work for us, more enjoyment for the community, but it's certainly, uh, certainly an option if it needs to be. So, uh, that's what I came to tell you. So all we're looking for is, um, buy-in so that we can get permission to do this. It's, you know, uh, whatever it's called, revocable permit, variance, something or other. That's, uh, it was, uh, I, it was Chuck Roy in Public Works who, uh, was, uh, advising me on what I needed to do, steps I needed to take and so forth. So that's why I'm here. So thanks for listening.
Questions? Questions, comments, anybody?
Yes.
Counsel Latino.
My, my major question is security and safety of, of these channels, instruments. You're telling me that they have them in other places and they haven't had problems with vandalism, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is that correct?
This is correct, and I understand Pueblo is not Fort Collins. The worst case from my perspective is, well, these were donated pianos. I would be more worried about if it's destroyed than, oh, now we have to get rid of it. And we'll have to get rid of it anyhow. We'll have to find, uh, you know, plans for disposal of the pianos one way or another, because they're not gonna last forever. Uh, you know, a few years out in the elements will be all they take. But I don't know, I figure it's a try and see situation for that. That's my, I, you know, until you do it, you don't know.
Yeah.
What I will say, I, I, I will put this out there. I live near what used to be Bessemer Park, Ray Aguilera Park. Does that, do I have the name right? That would feel like a good place. It's got all sorts of structures and so forth there. It is basically a homeless camp now. I could imagine places like that, having pianos that would actually sort of improve life for those people. And also, uh, maybe people might start taking ownership of it a little bit and, uh, taking a little, oh, well, that's our piano. You know, and that's, uh, and maybe, I don't know, maybe it's a little free security. Maybe not, but I don't know. It's an interesting idea to me.
I think would be a great, great thing to start with in this community.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, arts, the arts are a big thing in this community. And so, you know, we have the Da Vinci Museum coming. We have, uh, Chili Fried Holy Fest, we have the State Fair, we have other events that go on. And, uh, uh, music is a, is a big part of this community. We're, we're sitting right above the, the auditorium where we have a lot of events. So, uh, I'm, I'm excited about that. I just, uh, I'm, I'm just wanting to see where we can, can go with all this.
I, and I agree. I think, uh, starting small with just a couple and seeing how they go. Cause it could be the case that if you get more and more pianos donated and it seems like the program's working, then lots of other places could happen, but I would expect to start small and make sure it's, uh, make sure it really is viable.
Good, thank you.
That would be my main concern as well, though, is safety, like you said.
Counsel Maestri and then Counsel Flores.
Yeah, I would think a test trial would be appropriate if we were gonna do something like this, a test trial. Because it's all volunteer, correct?
Yeah, that would be the idea. We, we think it should be self-sustaining in, I don't know who ran the Denver program. I'm sure Joe Howes does. In Fort Collins, it's a, it's sort of a cooperative effort. They have an organization that's basically similar to HARP here, uh, that kind of oversees things. And yeah, there's a lot of donations. They, they get grants occasionally. It's, it's a very, it's, but I, I am not looking, I'm not here to ask for city funds.
Uh, no, but what I was thinking is that, um, you should have an actual plan in place. Okay, uh, before the city authorizes anything. So then that way the expectations can be met, right?
And for?
A plan, like we're gonna put it out here in this certain spot. We will service it so every so often. We will be the first to pick it up and dispose of it. All of those commitments have to be made, um, in order to, you know, execute any, 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 um, agreement.
Certainly, I, that, that makes total sense and I can certainly, uh, arrange to, because I've had these conversations. We just haven't made contracts or anything because we haven't had any sort of go ahead or anything. But if that's, if, if I should get them to like put something in writing so that I can put something in writing, I'm more than happy to do that.
Yeah, because I'm, you know, say one needs to be picked up and that phone is disconnected to the person who's, you know, who do, yeah. Who do we call in that case? So I would think that, uh, a plan that the, um, Public Works Department or whoever was gonna execute that Parks and Rec is willing to work with, and get that together before you ask for the revocable permit. And then just do a test run before you go full, full blown.
Yes, I, I agree.
We don't know. I think you should put the test run in maybe the most obvious area, one in one of the most obvious areas where you can get damage and where you wouldn't expect damage and see, see if they tie in the damage or not.
I like that idea, yeah. Riverwalk and, and Dark Horse.
You know, something like that.
Okay.
So.
Counsel Flores, please.
Yeah, with the, uh, revocable permit that you're gonna need, you're also.
Insurance. Uh, but that could be done. It would be very minimal and you could probably get endorsed onto the Pueblo Art Alliance policy.
Okay, and are you talking about insurance for the instruments themselves?
Yeah, you have, uh, since, uh, your organization is going to be moving them and that, that somebody could potentially get hurt, I guess.
Okay, so liability, yeah.
It's just because you will have to assume the primary liability and then add the city, uh, as an additional insured. But I, I would suspect that it would be very, very, uh, cheap to do that.
Okay.
It doesn't present much of an exposure. They're too heavy to tip over or anything like that, but.
Yeah, is, I mean, it's possible, but you have to work at it. But is there, um, is there someone in particular I should be pursuing that through?
Whoever you're dealing with now, because you, you'll have to fill out an application. I, I don't know. Do you know who we would contact, Brian?
Probably be with the Art Alliance. We could, we could find out.
Right, I, I bet as far as about it, yeah, insurance. I mean, you have a provider that just goes through, okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Christina again, okay.
Thank you. I like your ideas, though.
Thank you.
Counsel Martinez.
I think it's great and I'm super excited about it. I lived in Fort Collins for several years and I'm very familiar with the street pianos. Even in, so in Old Town, you know, you had four pianos. And on a Saturday night, you had college students who were shutting down the bars, who could get a little bit rowdy. And those pianos were totally fine. And I think it's a really great place making activity, like you were saying, right? It's, it's about building community and building, um, a safe space. It's not, it's, so what I'm saying is, in my many years in Fort Collins, and college students can get rowdy, I didn't see any pianos that were damaged or defaced or anything like that.
That's good to know.
Um, one of my questions, though, is some of the pianos, um, were, like, the keys were locked. Um, there were some times that were, that were locked, like you couldn't access the keys.
The fallboard, the, the cover?
The cover, right. So I'm, um, I'm curious what the plan is with, I, maybe, or maybe that's something to ask the, the FOCO people about.
Yeah, they didn't mention anything about that when I spoke to them. It's funny, I lived in Fort Collins for quite a few years also, but I left right, like a couple of years before they started this program. So I never got to enjoy it. But, uh, yeah, they, they, uh, I had a, you know, long email exchange and they sent me some documentation and stuff, but there was no mention about that. So that's, uh, something I need.
Yeah, it might be something to follow up. And I don't know if it's because, you know, uh, maybe they, you know, to protect the integrity of the piano. So only during the winter months, the keys were locked.
Could be.
Um, so something to follow up on.
Yeah, all right. Could be that that was one that, uh, needed more maintenance than they were like, so, but yeah, I, I just don't know.
Okay. I'm in full support. I think it's great.
Right, thank you.
Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think this is a great idea. Um, you know, I love watching those videos when I'm scrolling through Facebook and I happen to see, you know, the street artists performing, you know, a great musical masterpiece. And, uh, you know, I think it's just something that brings a crowd, it's positive. You know, uh, like everybody said, though, answering those questions, having a, you know, more well thought out plan and then coming back to us, I think would be good. Um, but, uh, face value, I, I really like the idea.
Okay. What, do you have, um, as far as what I would present for a plan? Should it just, how formal of a, of a plan are we looking for?
For, uh, when I filled out a revocable permit application through Public Works, typically they, it's pretty, uh, it's set forth in the actual revocable permit application.
But I mean, as far as like what you were asking for, uh, like how, you know, all those details, uh, I, the, the permit must, can't have, can't be asking me about like, well, who's gonna move the piano because it's.
Haven't seen it, but, uh, Mr. McCain will help you with all that.
All right, great. Yes, I, I met with, uh, with him and, and the, the mayor, and they were also quite supportive of the idea, so, yes.
Mark, um, I got something real quick. In reference to, uh, we have several art districts here in Pueblo and it seems to be right down their alley. So maybe as a pilot program, look at some of these art districts and also, um, the advent of, uh, this program and then having maybe CSU students or PCC. I don't know how that would flush out, but it just seems like it's a real kind of a neat idea. But, uh, so wanted to throw you, throw that on, so if you ever had anybody talk about a college getting involved or.
Well, yes, I, I mentioned that CSU definitely has pianos. They are ready to, to place. They are also, they are looking at it as, A, we get to get rid of these pianos, which they're happy about. B, the person, and she was possibly gonna be able to make it here, but I think didn't. Uh, there's a new hire, a new position within the music department, uh, whose job is basically fundraising and alumni relations. And it's kind of a community outreach type of job. And she is the one who had already started independently from me, looking into what they were gonna do with their pianos. And she wanted to put them around campus, but realized they've only got like two spots they could possibly deal with. So, uh, so she's like, yeah, we're gonna have leftovers to give you. And they wanted, they wanted to see it as outreach and advertising for CSU.
Okay, uh, any other comments, questions? I think we're good, Mark. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, um, well, it's only six seventeen. We're gonna adjourn and we're gonna be back at seven o'clock. We, that's the time we have to come back and start, okay? Oh, I'm sorry. The last one, that's been, it's, that's, that's been canceled. They canceled. Sorry, that was my mistake. Yeah, they canceled. So we're still coming back at seven o'clock. Good? Yeah, the last one was canceled. Thank you.